Welcome to the regular meeting of the South Burlington School Board. And I'll start with any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. And seeing none, I will make the quick comment that we have two of our colleagues who are participating in a concert over at the high school, actually observing a concert with their families participating in it. So they will be coming over as soon as, as soon as they're done that, within the next probably thirty minutes or so. But we have a quorum, so we can continue. Any amendments, David, to the agenda?
We have not.
Okay. We'll move to announcements and student representative reports.
Okay. Well, last week, the juniors took the science kneecaps, which went well. And we took S-Bax today and tomorrow, and next Wednesday and Thursday. Those are also going very well. Students are reporting that they're hard, which is what they're meant to be doing. So I guess they're going well. I think the seniors and everyone else are enjoying the half-days. Tomorrow night at seven is the National Honor Society induction for all students that got accepted this year. And also, the junior planned prom this last Saturday went really well, and I heard a lot of people had a lot of fun.
Yeah, it was really great. We also have a bunch of awards nights that are coming up. So our academic awards night is in June, June 4th. And our athletic awards night is, I believe, coming up Friday. Yeah. So it'll be fun. And we'll be recognizing a lot of awesome students that are leaving this year and from all four grade levels.
I have a question for you, because I've gotten a little bit of feedback from community members, and I'll direct it to you, but David, you may have input too. And this is the, I think it's a lot of the testing that's gone on in the last maybe week to two weeks, because I started to hear the laundry list, and I may not remember everything, but there were kneecaps, S-Bax, AP tests, and there was something else.
SATs, ACTs, SAT subject tests, and then exams.
Yeah, but those were outside of school.
Yeah, those were outside of school and outside school hours. So those three, kneecaps, S-Bax, and AP testing. And then on top of that, so there were some classes that were out of the school system at that time, but my understanding is there's a freshman community service day that was scheduled not during that time when testing was going on, but another day later.
That's this Friday.
Yes. So not, it wasn't scheduled while there was testing. So I guess I'm, I want to get students' perspective on, and you can probably share with me why we ended up with so much testing, kind of, in that period of time. So there were, there were classes that were out of school, correct, during that time? And that just seemed like an inordinate amount of testing that I started hearing about from a few community members. Can, can you give me a little student perspective on that?
Well, I have half-days, so this question would go to Marali.
Okay.
Yeah, so the juniors, I guess, have been at the end of testing. I think, so AP exams have to be standard across the country, obviously, and they go two weeks, and then they do makeups for another two weeks. And that was something that was planned, and I think that the students themselves are feeling a little overwhelmed. I know the school has given incentives, like, oh, this, if you do proficient or better than proficient on these tests, then you don't have to take the midterms for certain classes next year, which is encouraging, but also puts a lot more pressure on students to feel like they need to do well now in a really intense period of time, and that this is all that's going to matter next year. And, I don't know, I feel like students are getting the impression that testing is really what makes them, and that, you know, this is what's going to take them to college. And I think it's supposed to be encouraging that, you know, maybe this switch over to S-Bax will encourage people to look at our S-Bax scores and not like SATs or ACTs, which is out of school. But the addition of all of those, which are also, you know, determining our future, it feels like, have really just added like a sense of stress to the juniors especially. And I've heard a lot of juniors complaining, or just feeling really unsupported in our school, as a lot of teachers are also stressed. And I feel like they don't understand how to like connect with us, because they have also gone through training of how to give the S-Bax, which is also very stressful because of technology. But I think it's just like a disconnect between students and teachers of, we're not looking for incentives, you know, we're not looking to get out of our midterm, we're just looking for, to like, everything to slow down a little bit, and for us to be able to like take a breather and really focus on one or two things.
That's an excellent summary. Thank you for that. And I guess my question, you may not know this, David, but is there, was there, would there have been a way to stagger the tests where there was less hitting in the same week? And then also opportunities for classes that were out of school to be doing activities like the community service, unless there may be staffing requirements? But it, that just, it sounded like it was a perfect storm, but I, I know we tend to get that feedback on an annual basis, too. So I don't want to put you on the spot, but...
No, it's all right. I mean, I don't, I can give you a little bit of the general overview, and I can give you something more in the future around the testing windows. If you just think of a bar and the testing windows. We've got testing bars that are going on for kneecap, S-Bac, AP. And so when those testing windows hit, I mean, definitely the high school administration tried to look to the most opportune time and still meet the testing window and provide the makeup opportunities. And so there's some really, really stringent expectations, as well as not waiting to the very final end, particularly with S-Bac, which is so highly driven on technology and the technology working, because this is not just sit and take the, take the same test. It's based, it changes as I respond. And if I respond this way and I don't get that one right, then it changes the next question for me versus, you know, the person taking it at the same time. So it's very, you know, it's not as easy as print it out, hand it out, and collect it. I think the ACT and SAT, although those are, you know, those are Saturday, those also add significant stressors to our, to our students, but those are also on the, have the same window band, you know? So it's, it's complicated.
Do all of these, I mean, how is it, do they always have the same window band?
Well, SAT and ACT have those window bands throughout the country.
Right.
And APs.
And APs. And that's standard. And we have then the bands that come from AOE that give us our band, and the overlap was pretty significant to these other assessments.
And weren't S-Bax going to supersede kneecaps?
Well, they are, but they're in the phase-out.
Not yet.
That's right. So I think, you heard it, and I think it's really good. And we've definitely heard, we've had, you know, our elementary children, you know, we, there's been a lot of assessment. S-Bac assessments have gone on, and, you know, it's, it's been a little stressful.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think, as you heard, kind of the, we have a little division, me the student and you the teacher, and kind of feeling like you're, we're not in the same, in the same plane. Again, the teachers are stressed, because there's a lot of expectations around how to administer, like S-Bac, at all levels.
Right. I think it's also hard, because schools also ending, so teachers feel a push to get all the curriculum in. And that includes a lot of quizzes and tests right around the period where we have standardized testing.
Combinations, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think this is a good, it's a perfect thing to ask a little bit more now, particularly as we end our assessment, so that we walk into next year. We can also perhaps, you know, offer some suggestions up to the agency to say, you know, I think you really need to look at when ACT and SAT are being given, so that we're mindful to the academic, you know, minds of our students.
Well, it sounds like there's both a student and a staff opportunity to kind of hopefully relieve some pressure on, around the standardized testing side of it. I appreciate that feedback, because I was hearing that from community members, probably parents of juniors, is my guess, but I'm not entirely sure, because there was feedback also about classes that were not in school, so almost the...
Opposite.
The opposite and inverse of that, of, you know, not having instructional days and having that opportunity to be in school or complete requirements like community service. That's helpful, thank you. Good. All right, should we move on to master planning, financial stewardship, and city school collaboration?
So, where do we start? How do we make this succinct? City school collaboration, Elizabeth and I, and Pat Nowak, and Kevin Dorn met, was it yesterday? Yesterday. And again, that's been, we have again another meeting coming up in June, June 5th, which will be following the Steering Committee meeting. The items we talked about, which, you know, we won't go into great detail, but we talked specifically about legislative kind of post-activity and opportunities that, that we perhaps should be thinking about in collaboration with the city work. And we also talked about the master planning and visioning work. Specific to the legislative, again, just looking at, there's been a fair amount of conversation about voter registration. That was a topic, particularly, as you know, we've done some work on looking at our, our community and our voters, and what we have for engaged voter participants. So looking at that is important, and certainly to Donna Kinville, you know, it was, it was a driver. So that was, that was a conversation that came up, and how we can support and help that. A lot of that was around advocacy, around if we're trying to move some things, similar to what you, the board, have had conversations with both city and with the legislators around how we move things. I think we probably could have done, my sense was we could have done a better job, perhaps, to say, this is important not just to Donna Kinville, but it's important to the school board, too. And we, as Elizabeth said, we could have, the board could have written in something to say, this is important to us, and we could have done more advocacy to the legislators around, you know, the voter registration. That didn't, didn't go anywhere, as an example. I would say that was definitely a scaffolding into some of the other things, master planning and visioning, other legislative activity that we felt, you know, either fell short or lacked clarity. And so the brainstorm, really, I would say, is that we did better than we did the previous year. We had legislative breakfasts, we had a midpoint, and we had a kind of a post-check, post-question check around where do we kind of go astray. But there's another step here we think that might be important to explore, and I think that's an active conversation. We don't have anything definitive at this point around where we go with that. Again, certainly we'd be open to your suggestions as well.
And actually, we, we did discuss the potential for identifying even new legislation that might, we might approach our local representatives to sponsor as well. So that not only kind of position statements on current legislation that's in discussion, but proactive legislation as well.
No, good point. There seems to be a lot of silos, and we aren't really coordinated. And I will speak specifically to like Superintendent's Association. Again, I think there's good work going on there. I think there's good work at School Boards Association, VASBO, which John's part of, Principals Association, but we all kind of have these little silos that aren't as well-connected. And when we're trying to move big issues like education funding, you really, we need to be organized beyond a year in order to get there. And so it's kind of a multi-year approach, if it's a three-year approach. And I think all of us recognize, you could put twenty-five things that you'd like to get accomplished, but what are the three most important things? And how can we work collaboratively with the city, our local legislators, and our local, and our affiliates to make sure we're moving? Otherwise, it's a very reactive feeling. So that was, that was definitely part of the conversation related to legislative activity. Master planning and visioning, we had a task force meeting last night that was very engaging as they near the Steering Committee deadline, providing a report to the Steering Committee made up of the school board and the city council. And that will be on the third, and that will be from six to seven. It will be here. They'll be presenting for about forty, forty-five minutes, and then opening it up to questions and next steps. Again, the Steering Committee then have voting authority, but it would, obviously, the school board then can consider next steps and options and suggestions for me to assist with.
And I think, based on the June 3rd meeting, I think we're anticipating, and I know you're going to give it some thought ahead of that timeframe, what the calendar needs to look like from the district standpoint, going through the summer and kind of into the early fall potentially of follow-up items, expertise we might want to tap into, feedback we might want to ensure we get, things like that. So, again, not knowing exactly what's going to be presented at the Steering Committee on the third, I think we need to be prepared for a pretty, I don't want to say aggressive, but a detailed calendar over the summer in particular.
So I don't know if there's other specific questions on master planning and visioning. The other paper, Cory's especially been doing a good job. Thank you, Cory, for covering a lot of the master planning work. I know you weren't there last night, but I'm happy to catch you up if you have questions. So I don't know if there's other, again, Elizabeth was there last night for a good chunk of the time, as was Dan, and I know Julie's been there in the past, too. So very, very engaged. I do need to think about some appropriate way to thank them, you know, at this point, you know, certificate and appreciation and things like that, I'll be coming up with prior to the June 3rd. But I also think many, many folks that were maybe not sure of their level of participation have gone from not sure to now full engagement, almost in some cases, over engagement, like you have to remind them of the charge that the Steering Committee provided, so anyway.
Yeah, another quick item that came up at the city school meeting yesterday, and I may, I'll just take responsibility for having maybe missed this in the past at other meetings, but many of you have probably seen the survey that went out on brand identity for South Burlington. And I think, did Kevin say they've gotten, what, about eight hundred responses, or maybe I'm misquoting?
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. I mean, pretty good number.
But they've received a number of responses. I was a little surprised that that would have gone out in advance of the master planning and visioning work, because I would have thought that would have informed any brand identity work after the fact. But apparently, that was a process the council had in place since last fall, I think largely driven by the city manager. But they are getting good feedback, and hopefully it is feedback that can be woven into the master planning and visioning recommendations.
But the confusion sometimes could be master planning, visioning, task force, branding, task force, airport group, you know? To a community member, we, we have to really be careful that we aren't confusing or overwhelming, whatever the right word is. So that was a, that was a good conversation.
Yeah. And I think, even though we're meeting pretty regularly, there's still activities probably on both sides that, you know, we need to remember do impact the other party. So it was a good wake-up call, you know, to reevaluate what we may be doing that we don't think has any impact on the city that we should be reporting out on.
Can you talk to us a little bit, one of you, David or Elizabeth, about just that Steering Committee meeting is a discussion, we're listening to the presentation as a Steering Committee, and then, and then what? As a Steering Committee, what do we do, if anything?
It's really, I see the Steering Committee as a committee that certainly can ask questions, can inquire, can't ask, can't call for actions, can't vote. I think the power of that is, you know, the collaborate, the collaboration opportunity before you then break into your separate, you know, respective board and council is really the power. But it's really just discussion and questions.
And in terms of master, whatever the recommendation is, what does the council do as we go forward?
Same thing, same thing the board will do. They'll receive it.
So will the meeting on the sixth be to try to parse out those actions? I have a bit of a concern that there's a...
What was the sixth?
...a sequence of events that needs to take place, and that to get to certain points, certain other things have to happen, and they aren't necessarily all within one body. It could be that the council has to decide to do something before it's appropriate for the school board, or vice versa.
Yeah. Well, and by way of example, a specific issue that came up in David's and my meeting with Kevin and Pat was the information Paul Connor presented at our last board meeting. So we did bring up the fact that form-based code, the TIF investment policy, and the comprehensive plan, which both the Planning Commission and City Council might be looking at, those are all actions that supposedly may be completed by the City Council and Planning Commission by early June, but those would impact, for instance, what, if, if the recommendation might be to sell Central School, they would, for instance, those actions and implications would impact the content of an RFP that the district would send out to potential developers if we were interested in selling that property, if that was the recommendation. So the original next meeting for Kevin, David, and Pat and I was scheduled for June 16th, and we added the June 5th meeting to follow on, to make sure there was a pretty quick turnaround around what respective parties needed to be looked at post the Steering Committee meeting.
So is there any expectation that this board will have to take any action relative to master planning and visioning at the June 3rd meeting?
You, you, you the board... You, the board, could decide to do that if you wanted to do that, and you'd have to have pretty quick action to get tonight, something on the, on this upcoming agenda to do so. I'm not sensing that that would be your direction. It's really to receive, I think, to receive the steering, the task force, the task force group information?
I think it begs for a little bit of digestion.
That's right. And, and then conversation with me around where you might want to go. Some of that is likely to go into executive session, as it could involve real estate transactions and ideas. So, you know, there's some plotted careful next steps. But to Elizabeth's point, and what we talked about was, you know, kind of doing some backwards planning, not that that will totally be complete, probably, but backwards planning from, from a date forward to where we are today, so that we can look at that, you know, longitudinally, see what we need to do, get done.
Is there going to be some kind of message out to the community that that's going to happen on June 3rd?
Yeah, so we have, again, part of the, and again, Cory's been really helpful, the other paper, I should say Cory specifically, but we need to make sure that, you know, we have all of our, you know, our venues out there. So we've been trying to be really mindful of press releases and other paper information. So we'll need to really make sure that this meeting has the opportunity to be all attended, informed.
Where is the Steering Committee?
It's going to be here. It's going to be from six to, again, six to seven is scheduled here in this room.
I thought we expanded that timeframe.
Well, no. We, I don't think we did. We kept it six to seven.
No.
We could, and again, that can be a desire by you tonight as you go forward, we could, I think starting earlier than six was going to be hard for the, for the...
Task force?
Task, or the city council, and the, some of the task force members. But you could go into, you know, seven fifteen or seven thirty if you wanted to, and then start the board meeting that way.
They need to agree to that, too, right? The council?
But again, that, we certainly can do that. I'm a little bit worried, we've never done anything in the task force tonight within the time slot, so far, right? I mean, John knows, we've been there, and it's, you know, we start at five, and we put eight, eight-thirty, and we haven't gotten out of there, you know, much before nine o'clock, and then by the time we're done, it's later.
Well, you run the risk of the, the meeting expanding to the time allowed, too.
That's right. So what I'm, what we're working on is to have the task force provide a succinct information, and it might be highly likely that you're going to want a lot more clarity after, to receive, to be able to read and digest, and not think you're going to get all of your questions answered necessarily at that, at that meeting.
Even thought of.
Yeah.
Well, is there, I mean, I guess we could warn right now that our regular meeting would start later and give the option to the city council of an extra fifteen minutes to a half hour.
Yeah.
But I'm not...
I think it would make sense to delay the start of our meeting, but to advertise a shorter time.
Yeah.
You know, just keep the buffer there so that we don't end up...
You know, keep it worn.
Because I think, I think these meetings should start on time, and I don't think we want to force an end to the other meeting, just...
So why don't we...
It's a problem with having them butted to each other.
So why don't we warn our, our meeting at seven thirty, then? But we'll keep the agenda for the Steering Committee at six to seven. That will at least give us some transition time.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Anything else on master planning, city school? Okay. All right. Why don't we shift to the superintendent's report?
So I've identified two, two items here of the elementary school choice. I updated you last time, and I indicated that I sent some correspondence off to Rebecca Holcomb, and I did get word today that they're working. I mean, they've, she's received it, and she's deployed some resources, asking some further questions around what I've outlined in my report. So I'm, likely I'll get something back by the end of the week, or maybe the first part of next, affirming kind of where I'm at. So that's a big part for us. Again, June 3rd is also a place where, you know, we're looking at all the enrollment numbers and contingency staff, et cetera. So these all are connected to choice, and that's really my push to have that information before I do anything with allocating of resources. So that's, that's my, that's my desire to have that information.
Well, can you help me out on this? Because I think we, we already communicated that there would not be choice.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's, it's really on that Ed Flex waiver, you know, where I would like to get the highest level assurance that that would be granted.
Okay.
So that's really the, that's really the interpretation and the work that I've asked the agency to do.
So is there, is there a possibility that Markot would not move to the next level of improvement, so choice would remain open?
Highly unlikely. Right now, I think is a very, very, I think all of our correspondence today are consistent with what we've informed our community, you know, our parents of. It's the Ed Flex waiver that, that I understand were essentially will be granted. I just want something more than, I want something more, more concrete than that.
So who actually grants that, that waiver?
Well, it would be AOE, but their, AOE is wanting to gain clarity from the, the Federal Department of Education around the interpretation of No Child Left Behind and the requirements. So again, I expect that this will all be affirmed, my hope is fairly soon. Again, I had a short conversation today, and it seemed like it's going to be fine. So that's on the choice piece. I don't know if there's other questions around that. Legal request for proposal RFP for our legal services, that's coming up in our special warrant meeting on the 26th, and that will start at five o'clock. And we again have three firms that will be coming to you, and you'll be interviewing them to make a determination on where we go from there. And again, I indicated in the very bottom is the staffing request, which I just talked about.
And just to be clear, the legal conversations will be in executive session?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. We'll obviously start in open session, go into executive session. The board will have the interviews, and then come out.
All right. Any questions? All right, let's move to executive limitations, policy monitoring. And I know Martin has asked that we keep 2.1 for his return, so...
They're actually, they're running a little late. They're running too now.
Okay. Well, why don't we start with 2.7, then?
Mm-hmm.
I think we can start with that. Asset protection. I know there were some suggestions made at our last session.
And we added those in highlighted yellow. And there wasn't, there wasn't a lot.
So are we just looking at the yellow? It's the changes?
That's, that's what we highlighted. Everything else stayed the same.
Okay.
So, and under Detail Policies II on page three, there was the recommendation we add district credit cards, which makes a whole lot of sense. So, so we added that. And we've obviously checked that, too. It's basically, basically, there are four administrators that have credit cards, and the Director of Information Technology. And the... that have credit cards, and the Director of Information Technology, and the, the debt limit is, is $12,000 total, and so that's, and we've set everyone up online, so there's no question about, they, they can look at their accounts daily, so. And the next, I'm looking at the yellow, too, was Safety Inspections on page 5, under Detail Policy 4, just a word that was not correct in the first, the need there, liability need to be analyzed. The, in Policy 5, on page 6, there is a violation because that conflict of interest training had not yet been administered to everyone, and rather than have it be loose as to when that was gonna happen, we, we put in the dates, so, training will take place for year-round employees during the summer, and for school year employees, training will be completed by October 15th, so, gives them about six or seven weeks to begin on board. The next change was, we reported a significant amount on the security of our network, and provided information to the board, and so the, the change here is the board was briefed about district procedures concerning firewall protection, encryption technology, physical security, and the data destruction policy, and, and we won't list it out here, but it, it's available to the board, and so that's here. On page 8, under Detail Policy 7, the information up to that moment, when we did the report, was that we didn't have an auditor, but we do now, on May 4th, the City Council reappointed RHR Smith to be the auditor for three more years through FY 2017. They were our auditor for three years, with two successive years in their contract previously, this is it, this one, they cannot be renewed after this three years, at least automatically.
If they go up a certain amount, if their fee goes up a certain amount, do we, are we required to go out anyway, even if it's within that time?
Well, they quoted, they quoted the three years, so we're, we're in good shape there. They came in within budget.
Mm-hmm.
Dan and Amity, once again, that's City Council decision, but Dan and Amity Denton assisted with the move, so.
Yeah, the, the group was unanimous, there wasn't any discussion, but a point was brought up that, question was, should the city and/or the board have a policy that restricts the number of sequential years that a given auditor can be, be audited? The idea being that there's potential for the auditor and the financial insiders, and you need a party to get too close to each other, and to ease over things that shouldn't be eased over, that's the concern. So the question is, should there be a policy that you don't renew those things? That was brought to the council as an observation to something to consider, I'll bring it to this group as an observation to be considered, no action's been taken on it, to my understanding, but that's, it, it's sort of like, sort of like-
Term limits.
We have an RFP thing that says that, you know, if you do something that's lasted so many, been renewed so many times, that we're gonna, we're gonna have to go out for an RFP again, it's, it, I'd say it for completeness.
Mm-hmm.
On the other hand, there's a problem that we got very few responses this time around, we only got two, and they were, one was twice, twice the cost of the other.
It's a, it's a charter requirement, city charter requirement, so, their attorney probably should look at it in the context of, should it be a charter change?
Yeah.
It's just, it's a requirement that we can only have them for a certain period of time?
It's not in there, but I mean-
No, it's not in there.
Oh.
But it would be a charter.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
What John's saying is, if you wanna change, that has to be a charter change.
So, should we-
Well, it could be a policy change, couldn't it, in the council, I mean, I don't know, that's-
Well, the charter would supersede the policy.
Yeah, I think the charter would supersede a policy, 'cause it would have to-
The charter would supersede a policy, but I'm just wondering whether you could set a local policy-
If it could be a policy.
Within that, that's not inconsistent with it, but more restrictive than it.
So has that ever been, I mean, in terms of business managers around the state, has that ever been a problem?
Well, it-
That you know of?
It typically could be shared.
In the world, yes, it's been a problem.
It's been a problem in the world, but-
Yes, I mean, oh yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not real common, but there are cases where the auditor is automatically renewed with, because of low price, or whatever, and, and not much attention is paid outside of the, the business office, or the treasurer's office, so.
Hmm.
I mean, if the state law has just a little bit more, state laws require school districts now to have audits every year, that, five years ago, that wasn't a, that wasn't a requirement, so a lot of little districts just had reviews every couple of years, you know.
Hi.
Well, is that something you wanna, you might wanna, you wanna have a conversation?
Well, I'm wondering if it would be the board's pleasure that we just asked John to write a note, or either, or David, just to the city, with a, the observation that our charter change might be considered.
Is that something we could talk about at, not this particular, but a Steering Committee meeting?
Well, we could, we could even bring it up in the context of a city school, you know, one of the meetings we're having, but I'm just thinking for the sake of documenting it, just a brief note that says, you know, do we wanna consider a charter, mutually consider a charter change that would have term limits in it, for financial control?
Yeah, just for completeness, the council representative felt pretty strongly that there ought to be such a, such a constraint. What mitigated the discussion was, it was made clear both by Amity and by Sue Dory from the, from the city, that both parties have had the experience that they don't interact with the same auditor all the time, and that it gets distributed, so one of the, one of the hooks sort of in this was a request to RHR Smith to continue that practice, okay?
You mean, the actual person that's actually conducting the audit?
Right, that that varies, and that there are certain knowledgeable people, and the thought, thought processes, you know, usually when these things happen, it's because one person on one side, and one person on the other side collude, but if you, if it isn't one person, it, the probability that that could happen presumably plummets, okay? So, so anyway, I mean, I'm saying it to make it complete, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other personally, but-
Well, I'll write something up, so that we have it to give to either when you meet or the council as a whole, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I think it's good maybe not to, it would be good to go through us, I think, probably.
Yeah, and you don't wanna lose the feedback that you got during that process either, so, you've, you've communicated it, and we'll take it to the next level, and make sure it's not lost in the process then. Good.
And once again, thank you, just thank you publicly for taking the time to do that.
That's as tough as they get, John.
Well.
Send them my way. But if it helped you guys, that's great.
There, there was one other change that didn't get yellowed, I'm trying to find it, so, on fundraising, the-
Page 9?
We, is it page 9?
No, that's, that's a different thing.
On fundraising, we needed to add some detail as to when, and we did, but I don't see it now. Oh, I see, yes, I'm sorry, on, on page 8, under I report policy violation, the business office continues to make strides in monitoring of fundraising and student activities, our goal is to have all students, our schools, using the fundraising procedure by February 1st, 2016, and it probably should say fully using the fundraising procedure.
Yeah.
Fully using, so we had a word there. And we have interim, just a little bit more on that, we have interim audit coming in June 11th, and the auditors looked at fundraising and student activities in March, and they're gonna look at it again, especially on June 11th, so, we'll keep, continue to report what they say.
Now, just out of curiosity, that date seems really far off, is there some reason that couldn't be earlier, like the start of the school year, or the end of the calendar year, or is there, what's the rationale for?
It's, 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 we're changing culture, that's a very broad answer, but it takes sitting down with different groups, building principals, to get this, the understanding together that everything has to be scrutinized.
I mean, we're, I would say we're compliant with a large percentage of our participants currently.
Yes.
And we're make, and we've made, we've made great progress, but we do have these, I'm not really sure, other groups that are out there that are in, I mean, there's, we have a lot of-
Well, that's not, that's not necessarily the point, the point is that when we, that system that's set up, you saw the demonstration, I don't know how much you remember, but there were 30 questions, it's, it's, it's pretty cumbersome.
To get them-
You're gonna have a bake sale at one of our elementaries, I've reverted to using the blank form, it's a one-page form for some of that stuff, so we're working that out.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Little smaller.
Yeah.
All right.
Welcome back, Pat, Martin?
Thank you.
How's concert?
Excellent, Patrick ran over here right away, so I'm gonna stick around for a cake, I was just trying to beat you.
All right, so why don't we walk through, we're on 2.7 Asset Protection, we just have walked through it, so we're gonna do the monitoring report summary, so on Detail Policy 1, reasonable interpretation, yes, adequate data, yes, and in compliance, yes?
Yes.
On Detail Policy 2, yes on interpretation, yes on data, and yes on compliance?
Mm-hmm.
On Detail Policy 3, yes on interpretation, yes on data, and yes on compliance? Detail Policy 4, yes across the board?
Yeah.
Detail Policy 5, we're yes on interpretation, but we are not compliant, is the data adequate?
I think the data's adequate, but, but there's a plan, so yes, yes, no.
And there's a yes on the compliance plan being acceptable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On Detail Policy 6, yes across the board?
Yeah.
Detail Policy 7, we are not compliant, is the data adequate? I believe that's a yes?
Mm-hmm.
And, and yes on the compliance plan being acceptable?
Mm-hmm.
On 8, yes across the board? 9, yes across the board? 10, I didn't check that one, are we yes across the board there?
Yeah, we're yes.
And 11, Detail Policy 11, that's yes across the board as well?
Mm-hmm.
So the overall policy would be reasonable interpretation, yes?
Mm-hmm.
And let me just read it for the sake of the public here, the superintendent shall not cause or allow district assets to be unprotected, inadequately maintained, or unnecessarily risked. We believe the superintendent's interpretation is reasonable, we believe that adequate data was provided in this monitoring report, we have identified two detailed policies that are out of compliance, therefore the overall policy is out of compliance, but we have found the compliance plan to be acceptable on those two detailed policies. All right. So with that, we will move to the executive limitations policy monitoring on 3.2 Accountability of the Superintendent. We have continued as a board to work with David on evaluation of past performance for the 2014-15 school year, and we are putting together a summary now, and we expect to be able to meet with David at the next board meeting, briefly in executive session, and then report out in public at that time. Is that adequate time for people to provide feedback, or?
Are we, that's next week, right? Are we talking about next week's board meeting, or our special meeting? Because we have that Steering Committee, and we don't have, or I guess we have executive session at the end, right?
Steering, what is Steering Committee?
So that's a little tricky.
June 3rd, 6 to 7.
That's, okay, what's the next board meeting after the 3rd?
June 17th.
Would we still be in compliance with 3.2 monitoring report, if we move that?
Can we, can we just do a post, a post-meeting executive session on June 3rd?
We could do that, we just can't report out, well, we could, we, we could open it up again at the end of executive session, report out, but we wouldn't-
Can we do it on the heels of our meeting next week? Can we do an executive session then?
You really kinda, you need to warn that, I mean, we, we will warn the meeting.
Right.
You could warn it appropriately, and do that, it's not, I, I would recommend you not do that, just because it's out of the, your sequence, and-
Sequence, yeah.
Public, you know, should have the right and opportunity to hear what you're saying, and I would worry if it's an off one, then those that had it on their calendar, or, you know-
Well, based on our schedule last year, if we did it on the 17th, we would still be in compliance with the timeframe we followed, as long as we're not gonna go out of compliance with 3.2.
Can we still plan on at least doing the executive session component of it? The reason I ask is, I might not be back from being out of the country on the 17th in time for the school board meeting, I get back that day, but I don't remember when.
Oh, actually, I think I'm out of the country, now that I think about it.
So we might actually have, wanna reschedule it to-
So, yeah, let's put it on the executive session for the next meeting, and then-
For the 3rd.
Yes, and then on the June 17th meeting.
Okay. I'll confirm with board members off schedule, I guess, 'cause I won't be there on the 3rd, off.
Okay, but you can provide feedback in advance, great.
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, Delana did already put it on at the end.
Perfect.
So we have it, we do have it, post on the 3rd.
Sorry, here in the proposed budget, the proposed schedule.
Okay.
All right, so why don't we shift to 2.1, which we held for you, Martin?
Thank you.
At your request.
Let it rip, man.
Okay, how would you like to go through this?
Up to you, I, I think, if you wanted to, Martin, it's up to you, walk through it.
Yeah, I think we should walk through it.
All right, why don't we, we have not walked through this one in detail, have we? So we'll-
Nope.
We'll take it by each detail policy. So, 2.1, let me just read the briefly, read briefly, Treatment of Students and Parents' Guardians. With respect to interactions with students and parents and guardians, or those applying to be students and their parents and guardians, the superintendent shall not cause or allow conditions, procedures, or decisions that are inequitable, untimely, vague, undignified, or unnecessarily intrusive. We have eight detailed policies that follow in support of that overall umbrella policy, and the first one is Detail Policy 1, illicit information for which there is no need. Any comments on interpretation evidence or compliance?
I'm good with that one.
I made a, well, I made a, I, I was gonna submit the question on the evidence that was then responded to by David through email, so, I think that's a proposed change to the evidence, David, it's what you responded to.
Yeah.
And does that respond to the question you asked?
It does.
All right, so it looks like there's no additional discussion on Detail Policy 1. I'll do a review at the end here. Detail Policy 2, fail to solicit appropriate input or obtain necessary information to fulfill the district ends policy, or comply with the district's policy limitations.
I had issues with that one, and, and even though this interpretation may have been there before, you know, I, I've, perhaps looking at it with new perspective or something, but I really, I, I don't know what- But I really, I don't know what, first of all, I'm not entirely sure what that policy is getting after, number one. First, because we really don't have metrics to be measuring the ends. And how are we, in fact, trying to use the, the input from parents' guardians to help us meet those ends? That's one issue. But the second is just with the interpretation, it narrows it to just the environment being safe and welcoming. And that seems to be awfully narrow as far as what we might want to ask of parents and guardians with respect to how we're doing and achieving our ends. So I don't have any specific input, unfortunately, right now on that. But, but I don't think that interpretation really works. And the evidence as well, as yet, an end survey was sent out. But, but maybe it would shed more light on how it's actually affecting what we're doing to help us achieve the ends if I understood a little bit more about what that survey said. So I have a problem with the, the policy, the interpretation, and the evidence on that particular one. And I'm just wondering how to proceed, because I really think that, that needs some more thought of. I, I see a purpose of, of surveying or understanding from parents and guardians, obviously, on how we're doing and achieving the ends. But how, and, and how that should be done, it's certainly not clear from what's presented here on how it is being done, frankly. And the interpretation is a little too narrow.
It says it was being done by the survey that was sent out. What don't you understand about that?
What I don't understand is what the survey is asking and how it is in the least bit connecting up with the actual ends.
Would the evidence be seen in the survey?
Well, it depends, because if the survey is following what the interpretation is saying, which is an environment that is safe and welcoming. I mean, a, a safe and welcoming environment is one important aspect of how we're perhaps achieving the ends. But I don't think that even comes close to covering what parents may want to give input on as far as how the ends are being achieved. I guess that's my more fundamental issue.
I think, I think those are, I think on the interpretation and evidence, those are very good points. I don't understand what the policy question is, Martin. Can you explain that a little bit? I mean, to me, that sounds like a reasonable policy.
Yeah, yeah.
But given that it's a policy, I then understand the interpretation as being too narrow. If those are the words, I agree with that.
I, I don't think the policy needs to be changed. I mean, sometimes we should revisit policies and such, and maybe this is a time to at least think about it. But if we're all fine with it, it's perhaps more in the interpretation.
Broadening, broadening the interpretation to include all the ends is, I think, than not, you know, not just be so narrow. I think that's appropriate.
Well, or, or even broadening that, maybe it shouldn't be so broad that it's going to consider all the ends necessarily. Because do we need to go to the parents necessarily to see if they're, if they're learning a language, or French? I don't know. I mean, there's, there's, I'm sure there are some ends that are more susceptible to really being informed by going to the parents and guardians than others. And I think that that needs to be looked at a little more closely.
Well, is your, is your sense, Martin, that this, and these are, these are excellent points. Obviously, the detail policy could be changed to reflect the narrower definition of safe and welcoming. And the survey could have been used to measure that. But I think some of this, some of your comments are being informed by the more detailed conversations we've had over the past several years around metrics on ends.
Correct.
So if a parent's survey is being used as evidence, and it's one example of evidence on delivering on Detail Policy 2, specific to treatment of, of students and parents and guardians, given that we have an issue with metrics on ends, it might be difficult to administer a survey at this point in time.
Although, the survey could potentially have asked questions about all four-
Domains, yeah.
Domains. And, and, you know, there could be some general answers, I think, given by parents on all four of those things.
Can I, can I ask a question that relates to kind of the overarching thing up here above this that says that, with respect to this, that the superintendent shall not cause or allow conditions, procedure, or decisions that are inequable, untimely, vague, or undignified, or unnecessarily intrusive. And it feels like to me, the survey may be trying to get at kind of the communications, are there, are there problems? It's not necessarily specific to the ends. It's about getting input into the process that the school is used towards the ends, not directly at the ends. But I'm not sure if I'm interpreting that correctly.
No, I mean, and I'll tell you, I mean, I keep reading these and looking at them. And from my perspective, it's really, you know, the salient component for the detail policy is soliciting appropriate input. And then under the interpretation, from my perspective, it was also, and again, I think clarity around that's safe and welcoming, that's really, I don't, I don't know that that's needed. But providing the opportunities to solicit the feedback. So from my perspective, that's, that was the salient component. And everything that we do is, is kind of ends connected, you know? Everything we do in the district is to working, working towards fulfillment of our ends, our student outcomes achievement, which we, which we say is ends. So it was really soliciting appropriate input, and interpretation was about how we, how we go about doing that, and that we do it. And one component, although we have many around how we solicit input, is the survey. And we have-
Now, by way of example, on the survey, was, was it structured around the academic achievement in a person, or personal development?
Citizenship.
There's specific questions in there. I can't, I can't verbatim, and I don't have stored here either. But there were specific questions in there around making the connections to our ends.
Yeah, and, and following up on what Patrick said, I mean, it's, maybe this is not the, the right place to be pushing as far as this survey being a part of the metrics for measuring whether we're achieving the ends. Maybe that is out of place. But I still, even so, I still think just a safe and welcoming environment. I don't know if that could set the inequitable, untimely, vague, undignified, or intrusive. So something needs to be done. And, and this, and, and thinking about the interpretation, it doesn't necessarily have to be, well, this is one of the metrics we're going to, one of the ways we're going to be measuring the metrics. That might not be the right question for this policy. That's in the ends monitoring. But, so it might be a little bit different. And I don't have an answer on how that goes, but I think you need to revisit it with folks.
Well, in terms, in terms of the, a monitoring report, and I'll look, well, I'll look to anyone for feedback on this. So on this particular one, we, we do have an opportunity to ask questions about your interpretation here, correct? So I think there's some general consensus, I don't think we have to take action on this, that there are concerns or questions about the interpretation as it relates to Detail Policy 2. That's accurate? And as a result, or maybe even independently, the evidence is not supporting the detail policy.
Yeah, we don't really know, because we're not, if we're rejecting the interpretation.
Right.
But, but just, let me take one more step. Thinking about this is the inequitable component. Conditions, procedures, decisions are inequitable. And it could be inequity if, if you are in fact not reaching out to parents to really get their input on lifelong learning or personal growth, or any number of ends. I mean, that, in fact, can tie more into the fact that you are asking them the questions. It's still a little bit different of how you're going to use that for the metrics. But, but it does get into whether you're treating parents correctly by having them be part of the process of forming the metrics for the ends, or just forming how we're achieving the ends.
I don't disagree. You know, it's how we want our parents and students to be informed or treated.
I don't think we're giving very good guidance in terms of what we do want. You know what I mean?
No, that's true.
Well, I think, I mean, if you, if you look back at this particular policy, it was related to, well, one, if you just sort of step back, it's treatment of students and parents and guardians. So those are the two stakeholder groups that are covered. And in this particular detailed policy, it's about soliciting appropriate input or obtaining necessary information to fulfill both the ends policy or comply with policy limitations. So from that standpoint, it certainly focused on soliciting information. And then that's, that's probably where we are in agreement up, up until that. So if I can make a recommendation, maybe, David, that you kind of go back and revisit the interpretation, I would also personally add on the evidence that sending out a survey really doesn't constitute evidence from my standpoint. It would be what-
What you did with it.
Yeah, and what, what it informed.
Sent out, received, and evaluated.
Right, right. And the interpretation could be as simple as, but I don't want to be doing the interpretation for you. I just want to vote on your interpretation. But I mean, it could be as simple as, you know, ability to, on the district's ability to meet the ends. My, my problem is that it's really narrowing it to the safe and welcoming. Or, or it could be more detailed. I mean, you can look at it and ponder it and decide that you just want to know from parents and students and guardians, three of the categories of ends are not academic. I don't know. I'll leave that to you to figure that out.
I have a different question on this detail policy. And Martin, you actually may be the best person suited for this. So this is just a question of wording on the policy itself. So as this reads, the kind of preamble is the superintendent shall not-
Fail to-
Fail to solicit, and then it seems to be after the or. We would want to repeat fail to, because otherwise it would imply superintendent shall not comply with the district policy limitations.
Superintendent shall not fail to solicit.
Fail to-
If you start with the or, the second or.
Or fail to obtain?
Or fail to comply.
Oh, gotcha. The second or, okay.
Oh, right, right. Yeah, that's, that would make it clearer, wouldn't it?
That's clear.
But, but we'd have to do a whole process for-
Changing the policy.
So he, I think David can capture that in the interpretation, is what I would suggest, rather than going through three readings.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
I do. It was just an observation when I read it, and it seemed to imply something different, depending on how you would read it.
That shouldn't be that difficult to change a policy wording.
Shouldn't be, and it is, they're two different-
Well, no, it wouldn't be. I mean, if we just put it on the calendar and do it three times. But I, let's see what the interpretation is next time and see if it raises a question on that, is how I would approach that. Because it's ambiguous there, is what you're saying, and he can clear up ambiguity in the, in the interpretation.
That would be fine.
All right. Why don't we move on to Detail Policy 3, Use methods of collecting, reviewing, transmitting, or storing student and family information that fail to protect against improper access to the material elicited.
I'm good with that.
Any comments, questions?
Not from I. Nope.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to Detail Policy 4, Fail to operate facilities with appropriate accessibility and privacy. Any questions?
I did have a question of, I didn't see here whether there have been any complaints regarding accessibility or privacy in the, there's evidence of what you're doing for improvements, but has there, I mean, I'd like a statement, whether yea or nay, that there has been or has not been any complaints regarding accessibility or privacy. I'm assuming it's not, but I'd rather have it be stated, if that's the case.
Just saying either there has or there has not.
And past feedback, I think we did have feedback on accessibility of the field. And I think we made some modifications there, so it was more accessible, correct? So Detail Policy 5, Fail to establish with students and parents and guardians a clear understanding of what may and what may not be expected from the district.
I did have, for the last item, the, last time we reviewed this report, there was an issue brought up about teacher response time to parent emails. And you say you've discussed communication protocols with administrators and have been clear that responses should be rendered within five school days.
I told you ten at one point, which was wrong. Five days.
And then administrators have communicated this requirement to teachers. I guess that's all fine and, and good, but has that made any difference? I mean, is this in fact happening? Are people responding in five minutes? Are there complaints that teachers are not responding? And if there are complaints that teachers are not responding, what, if anything, is being done to follow up to try to make sure that individual teachers are responding? And I would even ask one further question, is, is this part of a performance evaluation as far as teachers being responsive to parents and, and students? These are all the questions that I have.
Yeah, so as far as tracking evidence in those areas, I mean, I think this is where in policy governance, you've got to circle. You've got to circle back, where you have tools available for parents to provide information, complaints, concerns, and if we're not being compliant based on our communicated procedures and policies, then it's going to circle back. Whether there's enough redundancy to allow that to happen, I don't really know any other way than, and I'm not going to go into the suggestion where we go and look at all emails when a question's asked and when you respond it. I don't find that that would be diligent in time usage. On the same token, the more we communicate this policy and our ability for parents to provide feedback, then if we weren't responding to any parents, I'm sure you would likely hear about it. Well, in fact, you've heard in some cases in the past. I think this is in part the process that allows for parents to know that I'm not being responded to, and I've heard this. I can, I can do something about it. I, I don't, I don't really know how to give you the, the exact evidence in this particular area around compliance. We communicate it. I can tell you when we communicate it. As far as actual checking, I'm perplexed on how to do that.
Would it, would it make sense to include this in, because there's kind of, it's, it's a, there's less rigor in this particular one that kind of says you've discussed it, administrators have communicated it. So the implication is it's being done because it's been communicated. But I wonder if, we, we have a number of things in the, in the training manual. So would that be a redundancy, just to make sure it's documented in staff training?
Well, I guess, I have-
That's one thing where, yeah, it says you will. I'm just trying to say, what's the, what's the checking?
Right.
Because to you, to, to you, I'm wondering of the actual evidence of this. How, how could I possibly, you know, I'm like, I'm just picking on the email.
Right.
Well, and this, it does raise a broader question. And this is one where I, I'd want to understand what you get fed to you as far as information on complaints that are, that go to, for instance, Paul Yun or Carson Schlentner in the middle school. Because frankly, the middle school is the primary place where I've heard complaints in the past. Maybe it's, maybe things are going very well, and that's fine, but this doesn't give us enough evidence to show that. But, but I mean, do they, if they get calls, if they're getting calls about this subject, which, which is a part of the monitoring report, I mean, does that come up the line to you so it can be reported on a monitoring report? How does that work?
I mean, my, my thinking is-
Or is it only when it's elevated to you from a parent?
Or, yeah, to a parent, or through some other mechanism, which we get into our complaint, our suggestion box, you know, and where we've provided that. I think that's where it would, that's where the, that's where it would likely come back.
Yeah, I guess-
So, listen, I, I think that this is, I mean, this is a hard one. This is a hard one for me. Yes, we can, there are other places where we talk about responsiveness. I think you're, you're right, where we can say where some of those things are, make sure that this, this is clear. As far as the checking, I think there's a reliance to the systems that are in play. Your board meetings, your accessibility, mine, administrators, and the recognition that people, if they're not satisfied, travel up through. And then we come back and say, was there a policy violation here? And if there was, and we've had one of these in the past, then we address it. And if there was, and we've had one of these in the past, then we address it.
But I guess, I mean, this, maybe this is a unique piece of information, but I don't think it is. Maybe we need to have a procedure where the administrators are seeing the concerns that only they are going to know if it's being resolved or not. I mean, if it's just happenstance that a parent brings it to Julie or to the board. And that's not sufficient, I think, for monitoring on some of these sideboards that we're supposed to be following in this policy. And this is just one.
Yeah, I do understand though David's perspective, Martin, that if you, if you look at, you know, arguably, you could look at any element of an employee delivering the service of public education and say, you know, I mean, you could start to get into, did you show up on time and did, you know, I mean, I'm just thinking of the ways the job gets done. So there, there is a reliance on the feedback mechanism from students and from parents and guardians. And I think we have, we have others, we have treatment staff and so forth. The feedback mechanism to indicate when something either is a trivial issue, a nuisance, or when it's, you know, risen to the level of more of a chronic issue, for instance.
Right.
So I, I understand what you're asking. I'm, I do understand David's point though of, you know, how do you regulate? And do you end up monitoring to the level that, you know, people aren't doing the job?
I think that we, I feel like when there's a significant problem, we tend to hear about it.
It gets elevated.
You know what I mean? I think all of us tend to hear about it. And if we haven't, I mean, I hate to go on that, on that basis of, you know, for everything, but I, I think when things are quiet, that's a good sign.
Well, I think the last bullet in that particular, in that, under the evidence, was an example of where that surfaced to the board. And to me, and is an example of, I'm just going to say, system working.
How it got addressed, yeah.
How it got addressed. I'm not happy that it happened, but it's an indication that, in fact, the policy known by the board, known by me, or learned by me, became present here. I think our work to do is around, do we, you know, are we establishing information that gets out to our parents, teachers, in the most transparent and adequate way? You know? Do parents know, you know, do parents know this? I mean, we try to provide them the opportunity via access to our policies and so they can know that. And if in fact they're not being either identified through the handbook in a way that's appropriate, then they have avenues.
Well, and my hope is that if these issues come up, one, they're not frequent, but two, you know, individual staff members or building administrators are mitigating the issue before it would rise to the level of board feedback. Because I could envision, if you think about this particular issue, this bullet point is in here because we were getting direct feedback as board members. There could be another example that I don't even know if it shows up, but the parent-teacher conferences. You know, if those were, the scheduling of those, or there wasn't adequate time allowed, or, and we have occasionally heard things, but that particular issue hasn't risen to the level of, you know, a requirement that's different within the, within evidence of a detailed policy.
But I guess here's, here's my problem with just relying on what filters up. That's, I wouldn't even call it random. I mean, it's, who happens to know board members and will call and rant to a particular board member?
But what you don't know though is that the issue did get dealt with at the lowest level within the organization.
But there needs to be some monitoring whether that's happened. My point is that of the 2,400 approximate students we have, and the 5,000 parents, guardians, people involved in their life, there's probably a small percentage who will call the school board member, or will go to the superintendent. There's a smaller percentage, but a larger percentage who will go to the administrator, building administrator. Then it goes down even further, and more people will actually go to the teacher. And then there's someone who won't say anything unless they're approached. I just happened to have talked to a person the other day and just was chatting, how are things going at, it happened to be Central School? And he complained about lack of communication with his teacher. But I mean, that would have never, you know, I wouldn't have gotten that input unless I just was happening, you know, to have five minutes where I have spare time or chatting. And that's, that's not a sufficient way to see if something, I think, as important as communication between our schools and parents and students, that we can just rely on that. And that's what troubles me, and I'm trying to dig maybe a little bit deeper to, and that's not, you know, it could be a part of a survey, I understand we have surveys. It could be a part of a survey that we're asking parents. And maybe it is all fine, and that's great, but I'm not comfortable just because there hasn't been a squeaky wheel to think that this is fine, is my point. Yeah, I could think more about it, but-
And I'm not saying I'm comfortable either. I try to create avenues and information where, by which we can communicate. Because I know not all parents will be, are, you know, diligent and will come to a board meeting, or will watch Channel 16. But will they visit and look at the handbook that we put out? Will they, you know, are there multiple means of ways in which they can be informed and/or communicate? It may be that they're most comfortable because they know Martin, or one of you. Or it may be that they know Jon Stewart, or, you know, that is in part in play our, the objective is around multiple avenues of access. I think the survey is important, but not all people will take the survey. So if you say, if that's the only thing I can check off, that, I don't think that's adequate evidence.
Well, and it's fair to say that, I mean, by the time feedback like this rises to any level, there's probably a higher level of frustration than any board member or David would want to see with a parent or guardian. So, but then you run the, you know, the challenge of when you solicit feedback, you're going to get it. Then you have the equal and opposite issue of the responsibility of acting on that too, so.
Right, what do you do?
Yeah.
There is a problem out there, what's the next step of us resolving it? But I think, I'd first like to find out if there's still a problem.
Yeah.
There are steps that we can take. There is putting, if there's a, if there's a teacher who has a chronic problem, and I'm not saying there is, but if there's a teacher that has a chronic problem of not being responsive to parents, it should be part of the performance evaluation, for instance. Right, so there's ways of getting at it, that we can go further. I mean, administration can go further. But that's not for us to decide how David deals with it. We need to see if it's a problem. And I'm not comfortable to know from this whether or not we have still a continuing problem.
Well, it sounds like there's a couple of venues that David could look at. One is, you know, is something like this covered in the performance evaluation system? I don't recall offhand if there's something around responsiveness to parents and guardians. But you've already got, you know, you're going to be evaluating detail policy two that includes a survey. So are there elements there that might include responsiveness as a mechanism for achieving ends that could be evaluated? But again, I don't think we're trying to dictate the how. It's really maybe are there, I think what you're asking, Martin, is are there areas where we could solicit feedback to validate?
And this one just kind of does jump out as an obvious one.
I was going to offer mine. I agree with the goals of what you're saying. I struggle with the hows as well, because, I mean, even if we said we wanted to find some really clear way to kind of confirm enforcement of this policy, that may not get to the end goal that we want, which is a substantial, reasonable, you know, response. A response that's actionable or resolves something, it's just a response. And so you're letter of the law type thing, you're hitting things. So this, it does feel like this is a really performance-based thing, and I struggle to, you know, how far do you lean into managing this until you start hearing noise and say you have to manage it as a performance issue? It's a tangled web, I think.
Yeah, and just to respond, I just want to find out if we're just not hearing that noise. And it's completely up to David and the administration to figure out how to try to modify that. And if we keep on top of this and every couple of years or whatever, we see that, oh, it's gotten better. And maybe it's gotten better, you know, since we dealt with this a couple of years ago. And, but I'm not comfortable just by the lack of a squeaky wheel to say that it has. So, but I'm not getting into the, the means to improve on this. I just want to know the measurement of how we're doing, so.
And the measurement, and I'm not disagreeing with your argument, the point, the measurement, in your mind, cannot be, we are not hearing it.
I think on this one, and probably others, that's probably not sufficient, especially if we have other means like the survey. But again, you know, well, I can talk about the means of finding out if we have a problem. I'm happy to weigh in and give you input on that. But what you do about it really, really is completely within your bailiwick. And actually, how you report it is in your bailiwick as well. And we should judge this on whether it's reasonable, this evidence, on telling us that there's an on problem. In my view, and others might not agree, is I don't think this is reasonable in how you're telling us that I've taken care of this. Administration's taking care of this problem.
What if there was some numbers attached to the evidence? What if, you know, you know, we have 2,400 students and access to handbook information has been sent out and opened up by, you know, X number of people, right? In other words, we know they've been delivered, you know, can't tell you-
You can tell what we open up?
Well, I can't tell you, open them up, but we've sent them. You know, I'm just, is this more in the venue of what you're looking at, Martin? Would it be, you know, you know, that level of detail around what we push out, what we inform, what we give out? How we, how we inform people?
Yeah, it's interesting. I'm getting a little mixed the further we discuss it, because I feel like what is the, what is the information that the district isn't soliciting that, you know, may be even more problematic than responses to emails, for instance? So there is an element in a continuous improvement environment that you expect feedback at all times. And there is, at some point, you reach a critical mass of acting on it. Or there's some level of potentially, you know, very serious feedback, that one data point is enough to act on. So I'm, you know, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Martin. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that even David going to, like, just polling his administrative team and saying, are you still, are you hearing about this within your facilities? That may be adequate.
Right, and the more I look at, probably, I'm even making this argument in, under the wrong detailed policy, frankly. Because this detailed policy is really about getting, making sure parents know that this is, not whether it's effective. Yeah, and not whether it's effective. So I understand where you're coming from. So maybe my point is a little, is misguided as far as where it should be. But I, and maybe I will study this further to come back and say, here's where we need more information. But nevertheless, I mean, I think that's a valid item for us, and I could probably quickly find a policy under which it should belong, that we should actually know if certain policies, well, we should know if all policies are working. But this one just happens to be a, well, they're all very important, but this one is, we do hear about. So I guess I will find another place to further.
And you can, you can give some thought, David, to metrics around, do parents and guardians and students know?
Yeah, and I guess the one question is, you know, a clear understanding of the policy is, you know, do they have a clear understanding of what's expected or not from the district? And perhaps having a little more metrics as far as how effectively this is getting to parents does satisfy at least this policy.
Curriculum documents, right, handbooks.
Okay, sorry.
All right, so we'll move on to detail policy six. Fail to limit the use of live security video systems to crisis situations and the immediate need of administrators for safety information, or by district or building administrators to ensure student, staff, or community safety.
My only, my only question on this one, and I probably didn't word it well in the question I sent. So the, the policy itself is, shall not fail to limit the use, and the evidence is a procedure about having it on, not having it off. And the policy's about making sure that it's not always on. So that was just my misunderstanding, or my question.
And I think that what we had in the past kind of addressed that, which was, and this was my question, which dovetails to yours, that there needs to be a finding that they need to be on to ensure student, staff, or community safety. And you did have that before, but you struck it out. Does that mean it's no longer a finding that it's important to ensure student, staff, and community safety? Because if that's the case, they should be off. But you're telling us they're on.
Well, they're in place.
Are they on all the time?
And they're allowed to be-
They're on.
By on, by the administrator to be on.
Right.
Or not.
Right, so the procedures dictate when you can have them on. Is that fair to say?
Procedures are in place which allow the administrators to make that decision.
Okay.
What I don't want to do is, I don't want to get into the place where I'm naming or informing whether they're on all the time or off all the time, or the times when they're on or off, whereby which then I'm informing the greater public of something I wish not to do to limit our liability, you know, our safety and security.
But what I'm thinking of particularly though are the entrance cameras, which are, they're on. And the public, I don't see that it's a bad thing for the public to understand that, that we are monitoring those who are entering the buildings. Isn't that the ones, aren't those the ones that are kind of-
They're in our entrance areas. We also have other cameras on that are recording devices. So the main monitor screens do show different areas. And they, again, procedures are in place for them to make decisions on. In some schools, I can see everywhere I need to see, I don't need it on. You know, so there's decisions that are made. And I don't, I, this is where I, this, we went through this once before where I don't- Yeah, where I like to record, delete cycles, you know.
Don't want to tell that.
Don't want to, and so that's-
But I think you can still, you can say in the evidence, you can, you can explain those procedures, and you can explain that as you understand it, no administrator is having these on without having made the finding, you know, that it's necessary to ensure the student, staff, and community safety. I don't think it's enough evidence right there to tell us whether it's used according to-
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that they're, they're in place. It doesn't matter whether they're on or off, that there's procedures in place to allow them to make decisions on, on being safe.
Concern of the past raised fairly vocally by some community members. They've been that these cameras could use for something other than safety and security that they could use for-
Disciplinary.
Just disciplinary things, or other than just finding out about people, okay?
Yeah, and that's going to get to the-
And that's, and that's, you know, and that delicate balance is something that we have struggled with, at least since I've been aware of this.
And that, and I think that then gets to the detail seven, which is where video recording requests are made, which-
Yes, which is-
Are procedures in place. So that's, that's an example of a procedure.
There was a conscious restriction to lead access to the recordings, as opposed to the real time.
Yeah, and there's procedures in place that do not allow people to have access to anything that's recorded that way. So, but I mean, I'm not, I'm happy to work to reword. I think, you know, the evidence from my perspective is, you know, they're there. And I provide the, through crisis management and crisis processes, that we have procedures whereby which the administrators or those devices can be utilized.
It would be helpful if there was some kind of a way in which you could assure that it wasn't being used for other purposes, okay?
Yeah, I mean, informed, it says that-
Somebody's sitting there in front of the monitor and watching what's going on. Maybe it's, maybe it's that the restricted number of people who have access to the viewing of the real-time things, or something like that.
But I mean, in the evidence, it says that the building administrators, you know, they have the procedures to stay informed in the most timely manner. Well, that's not the policy. That's not why they're supposed to have it on. Just to be informed about what? I just really think it has to be tied back to the reason why these are on. And the administration has to make a finding that that's the only reason why- the administration has to make a finding that that's the only reason why they're on, without having to say which cameras are on and when.
So, Martin, when you say findings, do you mean something in a really kind of formal sense, or do you mean in their judgment, they need to have them on? When you say a finding?
Well, let's see, what does it say? That, uh, the monitors may be turned on and may remain on when an administrator or police believe that the access is important to ensure student, staff, or community state, safety. All right, so it's pretty low, it's not really a fine, it's really not a very high threshold they have to pass, but I think they at least need to have passed that threshold.
Right, and what I, and I, I struggle with the wording, which is why I brought it up, but I think what I'm hearing David say is that those procedures are what dictate them being on or off.
Well, is, is what you're suggesting, that, that the evidence might be procedures are in place which allow the building administrators to have, at their discretion, to have TV monitors on at any time or at all times?
Well, no.
Is that what?
If they believe that access is important to ensure student, staff, or community safety, it's all about the safety issue. And I think that needs to be in the evidence, that the reason why they have it on.
So, that's more than at their discretion, so.
Yeah.
So, it would be administrators, um, who determine that access is important.
Yeah, for, for safety.
Yeah.
If they're, you know.
I, I do think that would be clearer, but it may be, I mean, it may be as simple as you can't see the front door from the office, so an administrator is.
We don't need to know those details.
Yeah.
You just need to know that that thought process occurred.
But that it's tied to, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that have enough feedback, David?
I don't want to keep the, that camera on to see if little Johnny is skipping school and smoking cigarettes in the back again. No, no, that's actually, well, I guess that's public safety. All right, just skipping school then.
You just kind of legislated your session. You warped. All right, I think David's got enough to consider some clarity there, some rewording. Detail policy seven, fail to limit the use of security video recordings to inquiries by the police about criminal investigations.
I just, I just don't understand the evidence here. It said, the first bullet point, it says, to review, to view recordings, police must request permission from the superintendent, and the superintendent must be granted permission from the police before releasing.
It's a double. In other words, I can't grant permission solely, nor can he. Part of the way this was set up was that it had to be a double. So, if, if there's a request by the police to use our system.
Yeah.
There has to be permission from him that his, one of his officers has witnessed something and shared something that he believes should be investigated by the use of the camera, and by which he then sends me that he's okay with that being released, then I will allow the, the video to be released. So, it's a double check system.
Okay.
Whether that's clearly articulated in that statement.
I understand now, I just didn't.
Must be or must grant, I suppose.
You, you could make that a little clearer if you say to review recordings, and then insert in there, both of the following must occur.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't, it was to me as well.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Any other comments on seven? All right, detail policy eight, fail to inform students and parents and guardians of this policy, or to provide a way to be heard for persons who believe they have not been afforded protections under this policy. I think we probably don't need to do the overall policy, do we?
Unless you want to offer feedback on the evidence.
Any, any feedback on the evidence for the overall policy? Now, actually, you, um, why wouldn't those go into detail policy eight as evidence?
Under the suggestion box?
Yeah. Right?
Yeah, it could go down.
Yeah, it could. Yeah.
All right, so it looks like we will add this to the future agenda for another reading?
My only suggestion is maybe we need a longer concert next time.
Exactly.
Oh!
Exactly.
I gotta have a little. Gotta have a little, Dave.
I like it, man.
That's all good.
Well, I have to say, I enjoy being here, but I would have enjoyed being at a longer concert.
Don't.
Okay, um, let's move to agenda item nine, setting the agenda for the June third meeting.
So, we're going to change the start of the meeting to June third, right? Is that what you said?
Seven thirty.
Yes, June third, yep.
And.
Lost the meeting.
There is a lot on here.
So, do we have a lot on this? Here it is.
We do have executive session to the end.
We can take three point two off, can't we?
Yep.
But don't we have to? Oh, okay, we're going to do that.
We'll put it on executive and just put it on the seventeenth.
Okay.
Anything else on the agenda? Other than the start time? There's a note on change in location, what's that reference to?
Because we changed.
Because it was going to be at Chamberlain.
Because it's going to be a steering committee meeting, and, actually, Delano was the one who made that recommendation, we'd be tight at Chamberlain, and we should be here.
Yeah. Okay, unless there's any other comments on the June third agenda, I think we're set on that. We'll move on to any future agenda items, anything that can come off, or anything that anyone would like to add.
Well, at some point in time, we're going to have some action, I presume, as a result of the steering, the task force recommendation, so we may want to choose to acknowledge, we got to do something there.
Well, we've got, we're keeping it on as a standard agenda item, so I think we.
Okay, we're just keeping it.
Yeah, we'd probably end up keeping that there.
One thing I, I would like to add, and I, you guys can overrule me, but what, the discussion that we had with the, with the students about, um, all the testing and the days that come off because of the testing and the shortened days, um, I think it's, I think it's a real issue, and I think it's going to become a bigger issue when, because we added all those late starts next year. So, I'm just curious about, so that, I'm curious so that we have some information, we can tell people when they ask the question about seat time that's actually lost to those days, um, of just instruction for kids, you know, and what the total seat time is in an, in an academic calendar lost, and, you know, is it, what, is it changing year to year? Are we, I, I mean, are we in danger of, you know, being under our.
State statutes.
State statutes?
Well, let me, I, I wrote a note on this earlier about just kind of the testing windows. I think it's good to show you the, kind of, I'm, I'm using the bands, you know, from month, you know, when the weeks are. And I think it may be something, again, that walks into informing, you know, our community, but also perhaps legislative activity into the future around, you know, what are we trying to do? Are we, are we going to test one-third of the time and, and, and teach two-thirds? Or what's the right ratio here? And, is anyone keeping track of that? You know, and again, we've, we've done a fair amount of looking at that, and trials so tried to stagger, but it's, it is a lot. So, I, I think it would be important, and, and I heard you also say, put that together with some of the other mandated requirements, like P O P and P B G R and transferable skill work that we're trying to get in to be ready for the implementation windows are also at play here.
Yeah.
So, I, I think there's, I can kind of see, you know, let me, let me give you some information on that. I'll, I'll work it into my report in the next couple of meetings.
Thanks.
If you wanted to add that to future, you could, but I'll put it under my report.
That's fine.
All right, we'll consider the minutes of the May sixth meeting. Any comments or changes?
I have a few suggestions. We list a number of executive session guests, but we don't name who they are or why they're there. I think we should note that they were, since it's an exec session, that they were just there for part of the meeting, not the whole meeting. Specifically, the superintendent's evaluation section and the other. And then a sort of a separate issue, I think it was pretty significant that Steve Warner was here to support his request for a fairly significant amount of money for the S T E M thing, and, so he should at least be listed as a, an attendee at the meeting.
You and I responded to those questions that Dan had, and I agree.
I, my one, my one question about that, Dan, about the, ask, you know, naming the people in executive session, some of those, some of those, those are issues like collective bargaining and things that we may not want those people named.
Well, again, you have the, you have the ability to do that. I, I can say on my behalf, since they're individuals that I have, because it's involving me, I could, I could elect to say I wanted to have all of that on my behalf of evaluation, to have it all in public session.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, I'm fine with, you know, naming like the individuals in the future, though, we don't, you don't need to name, you know, other, um, specific individuals outside of the board on who's participating, who's on the phone, who's providing.
Okay.
With feedback.
That's what I wondered, okay.
You know, you certainly have to declare what it is you're doing.
Right.
It has to be in an appropriate executive session, but you don't have, remember, that's very clear about.
Putting us at a disadvantage.
Minutes and all of those things, right?
Right.
To do so would be, you know, disadvantageous, right? And again, I, I could say, well, I would rather not name them, I'm fine, they've come to the meetings.
Yeah.
They've been in public, it's fine, you know, they're kind of in that mentor-coach role.
Got it.
And I, I had a change on page two. I wanted to suggest that on the zoning on school district properties, that, um, we just add a little clarity, that the board asked several questions, including specifics on the timeline for approval of the comprehensive plan, form-based codes, and the TIF investment policy.
Say it one more time.
Form-based code, TIF and ses.
TIF investment policy and, um, the comprehensive plan. Any other comments? All right, with those changes, the minutes are approved, and we'll move on to agenda item twelve, considering maximum expenditures on high school elevator projects.
So, this came out in your mail today, it's probably by your side, it is by your side, I think. So, this is that guaranteed maximum price, and you, I think you've been provided with a fair amount of information about that in the past. I'll let John answer questions.
Well, it's a little new to me, and you haven't seen this since I've been here, and I don't, I mean, none of you have seen this before. Because we have a construction manager who's bid on the job and gets a, a fee, um, we, the plans and, and the district dictate how much can be spent for the project, and their job is to solicit bids, and our job was to see that the diligence was done, and, um, and that the best bids were selected. So, um, I gave you a little bit of information that he, um, it's Negli and Chase, Gary Cago, and he may be in here once or twice during the project, but he, he solicited bids under maybe fourteen categories and talked with fifty-one or contacted fifty-one different vendors, and I think we received thirty, fifty-seven subcontracts, and we received thirty-one responses. And then, um, for instance, we, we contacted, um, six people for structural steel, and we wound up getting four people who committed to bid, three, three actual bids and two that qualified, so we picked the lowest. And that's the, that's the process. There's a ton of information here, but I didn't want to, it's all available, but I didn't, I'm trying to figure out what's the best to give to the board. The bottom line is that we met twice with the construction manager, with the architects, David and Patrick were there briefly, and Bart Mazzelli, to go through the, the bids he received, to analyze them, and to make sure we were in the, we agreed with some of the selections. So, we've done that. Um, the bottom line is that this comes in, uh, we have two projects which we've combined here, one, the ADA elevator project, and then that restroom, and the total budget that we've set was $677,000, and the actual comes in at 672,201. So, that's good. And typically, when you have this kind of a contract, there shouldn't be any change orders. But if there are, if there's unseen, unforeseen circumstances, we would come back to the school board and say, they would go through the same process, we'd screen it, and get back to the school board and say, there's contingency in the, in this project, we need to use some of it, and here's why. So, it's all pretty transparent, we're not just handing the job over. We're not looking at the, his purview is not the hazardous material abatement, which we bid separately, he starts right after that's all done. The construction management fee is what they've bid, and so, Negli and Chase, that's what we're paying them, and the architects and engineers and electrical engineers and that kind of thing are all separately. So, the, the thing that he's bidding on is the, um, the construction itself. Also, in his, in his work, he did, he got bids on the second part of the bathrooms that we'll do next year, but that's not, not approved yet because we don't have the funding for that. So, those numbers are here, but we're not counting those, so that's, that's the reason.
Does the board have to approve tapping into the contingency?
In this case, you would, because the construction manager has certain limits.
Does that risk the schedule?
Well, we don't have to tap into it right now, so doesn't, this, this will get this one.
I mean, July seventeenth, we discovered there is an unexpected thing.
Right.
Okay, we're not meeting for three weeks.
Well, that's a good question, I don't know the answer. I know that Bart Mazzelli will be monitoring this.
Somehow, I don't think we want to have the thing crash and burn because we just want to have it be available.
Well, let me say this, I, a lot of this money won't be spent till next year, so we're, we have that caveat that we were approving $672,000, we, we would have time to, to fix that, I think, just because.
That my, my, I would just hope it wouldn't upset the schedule.
Yes.
You know, it's not one of these deferrable things.
Right.
Schools got to come back on and take certain.
Yeah, and I think Julie mentioned, I mean, I mean, likely, you know, during a period of, of distance between board meetings, we, we may have to just be on, you, you, board should be on notice that we've got really, we've got a lot of activity going on, we may, we may need to get a quorum of a.
And we have our eyes in ears, Bart will be taking pictures, he has the forms, so, so we'll know if that's the case, that's a good question.
No, I just, I mean, if that's the process, and we have a real way to deal with it, that's fine, just, I don't want us to get stalled because we hadn't thought of our.
Right, right.
So, I need to ask either really dumb or, or a really untimely question, but this is the last step required before work can proceed, correct?
Yes, I mean, we have our construction permit, but the, last step required from the board.
And, um, I sat through the last meeting of the task force last night on the master visioning and planning, which may include some longer-term recommendations that would include the high school. We may see those on June third. Is this an investment that administration feels comfortable making, given that there may be some recommendations down the road that include the high school?
Can I give first record?
Go for it, John, go, take it away.
This is all done because Americans would disagree. If the high schools repurpose for a grade school, a middle school, or the, the, the conditions that are there for, um... for it to be upgraded, yes, this needs to be done because we have students who are gonna really not have access to their classes in the current time.
Right, and that current time would be, you know, now, three, four years, it's critical, you know?
Is there a different way to ask the question you're asking? If we knew that this was a long-term facility, they were gonna house students in, would you do this differently?
No.
I don't know.
I think the other way, I, I interpret-
Something like that.
No, I think the question was the other way around, and that is-
If we knew you weren't going to have-
Yeah, that could be true, but it's two ways to look at it.
Well, and let me, let me ask it even a different way.
I know where you're getting at.
Let me ask it a different way, if, is there a time factor involved here that if we knew that the high school might be utilized in a completely different way two years from now versus ten years from now, would we reevaluate options to do something differently?
Well, the only, the only way I see that being is we tear it down and not use it, I mean, rebuild a, and build a new high school.
But is there a time variable in this, that could we, could we cobble together compliance with ADA requirements for a shorter period of time? And, and the only reason I'm putting time as the variable here is that I, I kind of want to know, is, is time a variable?
I don't think, I don't think time is a variable right now because we have the identified need.
The identified need in the-
And we have, we have-
The condition of the elevator.
That's right, and we have the conditions, ten conditions, and we're trying to do two, three of the major conditions to be time, time, you know, time certain to accommodate our students.
I, I, I think that the second part of the project, the restrooms-
That's right.
You know, we're gonna meet the minimum by doing this, this one little restroom this summer. The other part of it, we, we probably need to look at that a little bit more.
That, that may-
Because although those restrooms are, the context of those restrooms is they need to be replaced, even if it wasn't ADA.
But that, those are the types of things, I think, as, as we go forward. We, we definitely, well, to my thinking, we've prioritized the things that are most critical to ADA access, and those that are, you know, and we have many others that are down the list that we could reevaluate and determine, is that still on target to be done, or now, given the more recent information, should that go somewhere else?
So what I'm, what I'm hearing then is regardless of any recommendations that may come out from the Task Force that ultimately may or may not be adopted by the School Board and recommended to the community, that there is no period of time under which the administration wouldn't recommend moving forward on complying with ADA requirements and this investment. That's supposed to be a resounding, "You bet."
Well, the uncertainty of what to, there's so much uncertainty of what's gonna happen, but I, I made it clear, and, and I don't want to keep my opinions in the committee about what, some of the magnitude of the bond issues.
Right.
I, I'm not sure that's a short, I don't think that's a short-term financial decision that the voters will make. So from that perspective, and my-
Well, that's all futures anyway, and it's, I, I understand-
Going present.
From, from, from my perspective as a business manager, I don't see it happening in, in a, in a, a short period.
Let me come at it a slightly different way. Are these contracts cancelable?
Well, and we-
Can we already sign on to this?
We've talked about it, the cost would be, the architect fee, that's done, that's not refundable. There, we'd have to settle with Negli and Chase because they've done considerable amount of work. The, the other contracts aren't signed because this is the last step before we, we've, we've got some, we've invested in some shop drawings that are out on the field, so there, there's a cost to not going forward.
So if we approve this, we, we then get into a cancelable penalty situation?
If, if you don't approve it.
If we don't do it, then I presume we don't proceed with what's-
Oh, I see, yes.
But if we do, if we do, and then we don't get any work done at all.
Right.
And if we do approve it, then I think we're in a situation, that's what I'm asking for confirmation on, where we've got a contract that's cancelable but only with penalty.
Yes, that's true.
Not without a significant financial liability, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and, and the reason I'm asking is we, we're at sort of a critical juncture. I think every Board member has asked this question all along, and I think administration has been asking it yourselves, of what is the best way to comply with ADA requirements and provide access to the facility for our students, our staff, and the community that need it in a fiscally responsible way? So, you know, I know there's been a lot of due diligence here, I do support this project, I think you always have to step back at sort of critical junctures and ask that tough question, the same way any one of us would ask the question about moving forward with a commitment when you have, you have the variability of time and new information, and, and we've had that throughout this process, so I'm really asking the question on behalf of, of the community and the district.
Good question, and I, I think we are in the, in the right place. That said, you know, there's a lot of activity that's kind of gonna be, could be big news for Self-Rollington, you know, moving forward.
Right, I feel like there's a lot of uncertainties, a lot of things that would happen if, to get to the point where we're not using the high school students.
Correct.
And it's much more likely that we're gonna be at the high school needing to provide this service over the next five, ten years, it may not be an absolute black-white thing, but it's pretty close.
And you folks were definitely part of, you know, the, kind of the due diligence around, you know, looking at all kind of cost factors around how, how we could do this differently, you know, are there different places where we could put a different, a lower-cost solution? The complexity of the building brought us right back to where we are today, you know, and some of the, some of those kind of needed work around, so.
Good question, good question.
I have one other, I have one other question?
Yes.
Do we have to approve both Phase One and Phase Two this season?
Well, I would say yes.
Okay, with those answers, let me make the motion that we approve the maximum expenditure for the ADA elevator project and the small restroom renovation of six hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and one, as shown in the provided spreadsheets.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, and we'll move on to consent agenda.
Yep, so we have some new hires here, speech and language, special education, early essential ed, and CAS, and then we have a retirement of a longtime employee out of Brick Marcot Central School, I think twenty-eight years. I don't know if there's specific questions there, I know you have a detail sheet also around those hires as well.
And all the, all the positions are within the budget, an existing headcount?
Yes, so two-
I don't have that sheet. Are they within the headcount, current headcount?
Yes. Some are over budget, based on where they come in.
So, I have a question about that, David. If, if they're in the current headcount, and yet it says this is a new position, this is a budgeted position, a budgeted new position?
Yes, that first one, yeah.
Let me just look there.
Well, actually, the, two of them say that, this is, right? This is a new position?
Yeah, they were budgeted in special education's budget.
Okay.
We went back to the budget book, they're listed right at the beginning, a new position.
Okay.
So that, yeah, that wasn't-
That's what, that's okay, that's what I wanted to do.
Do you need action on this? Any other questions on the new hires? And I will acknowledge Lori Parmerly's service to the district, and we'll send a note on behalf of the Board thanking her for her many years of service as well, I think you said twenty?
Twenty-eight, isn't it?
Twenty-eight, yeah. Amazing. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And the motion passes. Because I'm not saying any opposed, I need to get better at that. I just don't give anyone the opportunity to oppose. Exactly. Any questions in addition to what might have already been submitted on AP Orders forty-one and forty-two? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Before you do that, seeing as I missed it, if there, either, I can give you a three-minute, if we can still, like, amend on, on, on a couple items in the legislature that happened that I think folks should be informed about, or we can put it on-
We do have it on our, we, we have legislative-
Update on the next agenda.
Update on the next agenda.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Yep, so we have a review of new legislation and impact on Self-
Any impact to the district?
Yeah, item ten, next week. And maybe, if you wanna-
Next week or in two weeks?
Two weeks, I mean, the third. Is that, is that okay, or?
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's fine.
Are you both gonna be on the second meeting in June?
I, I will be, yeah.
I, I guess the, the one thing that, to throw out there, that we may want to be thinking about by next time, because we may want to move on it fairly quickly, is whether we should be reaching out as a board to some of the other boards in Chitlin County regarding possible mergers of one sort or another, I mean, it's very exploratory at this time, Grand Isle, Isle of Mott, Winuski, whoever. People should just think about that, because if we do decide, we, and I think we should at least reach out, that's my, my opinion, we should probably do that soon, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's good, and I, I think it should be maybe embedded in the, in, in the June third discussion item. Next steps, legislative activity, understand what the, some of the changes are, and then from those, what might be some steps you want to take. Small schools, et cetera.
Right, right.
All right, so now do I have a motion to adjourn?
So we'll-
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.